Thank you. Did everybody hear that? Thanks. Good evening, everybody. It is Tuesday, June 8th, 2021 at 6:00 PM. This is a meeting of the Cohasset Select Board. Tonight's meeting will be conducted on the Zoom platform and live streamed on Cohasset 143 TV and Cohasset's Facebook page. The public is also invited to participate on the Zoom platform, which can be accessed using the link provided at the top of the posted agenda for tonight's meeting. Members of the board and other scheduled participants will be able to participate when called on by the chair. Board members will be asked, will be able to ask questions of any participant. All votes taken at this meeting will be by roll call. Members of the public who wish to be recognized are asked to raise the hand icon, and if comments are being accepted at the discretion of the chair, you will be promoted into the meeting. You will be asked for your full name and address for the public record. Please note that comments on Zoom or any other platform will not be monitored during the meeting. This meeting is recorded and will be available for later viewing on Cohasset 143 TV. So first thing we'll do by last name alphabetical order is a roll call, beginning with Jack.
Jack Creighton, point of order. We don't know who's chairing this. We don't have a chair.
That's, that's on the schedule for 6:35 after executive.
I'm sorry, but if we do not have a chair, we can't go into session. I don't know how this transpired, but we do have to have a chair. And the first order of every board after elections, and at elections, as you know, all positions evaporate, is to establish who the board chairs and officers are.
Um, that's, that's procedurally not correct. The positions do not evaporate. They, they stay on until, just like appointments, until such time as there's a vote for a chair. It is scheduled for 6:35. So I'm going to chair us through executive session. Unless there's any other comments from the board. Okay.
I say that this, I say that there's very, a high likelihood that we're not properly in session. But I've made my comment for the record.
Should, I did run through this with town council last week, but should this be incorrect? We will just have to redo the executive session as a matter of correction. So, so I am going to ask for a roll call, beginning with Jack, please.
Jack Creighton, Jack Creighton here.
Jean, you an H or a D?
I'm an H.
Corey Evans here.
Jean Healy Dipple here.
Diane Kennedy here.
Carrie Thompson here.
Okay, we are going into executive session under exception number six to consider the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real estate. If the chair declares that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the public body. The board will discuss the auction of town-owned property on Jerusalem Road. Is there a motion to go into executive session?
So moved.
Okay, and is there a second? I got you, Carrie. Corey, you have a second?
Sorry.
Okay, roll call, please, to go into executive session.
I'm not on. Jack Creighton abstain.
Okay.
Corey Evans, I.
Diane Kennedy, I, sorry. Go ahead, Jean.
Jean Healy Dipple, I.
Diane Kennedy, I.
Carrie Thompson, I. We gotta get the new order down.
Great, I know. Sorry about that. Jumped the gun. Okay, so everybody, the link is in your email box, and I'll see you in executive session. I read. I, I read the virtual meeting introduction before we went into executive session. Reminder that tonight's meeting will be conducted on the Zoom platform, streamed on 143 TV and Facebook Cohasset, Town of Cohasset's Facebook page. If anybody is here to make a comment or in public comment, I will ask that you raise your hand and we will promote you in this first section of the meeting, and then we are going straight to the next item on our agenda, which is board organization. So if there's any public comment. So it looks like, looks like Justin Pampari is here for public comment. If Tracy, if you, or Justine, if you'd like to promote him. Jay, you're in, you're in the room. If you could, just for the record, just give us your name and address and.
Hi, good evening. Thank you. Jake Pampari, 7/3 Jerusalem. Thank you for the opportunity to make, just, I'll be very brief. I would like to respectfully request that the select board encourage the town manager to resume the search for a full-time conservation commission agent position. It's currently open now within the building department. While the position has been filled with some part-time help since the former agent left, I think it should be filled with a full-time employee who's invested for the long term, so that the Concom has the necessary resources it needs to properly administer the town of Cohasset Wetlands rules and regulations, as well as the stormwater bylaws. There were, as I understand, there were several highly qualified candidates that were interviewed in the first round by the town before the job search was suspended. So for continuity to support the Concom's mission, as well as not lose momentum with any qualified candidates, I think it's in everyone's best interest for the town to backfill the agent position without any further delay, and thank you for your attention to this matter.
Great, thanks, Jay. And we'll consider that for our future agenda, because we can't comment tonight, but appreciate those comments. Anybody else with public comment? Okay, let's get into the meat of the business, for the meat of the meeting. So first, I'd like to welcome Jean Healy Dipple. Congratulations and welcome aboard. We look forward to working with you and having your knowledge and energy, helping us continue the brisk path that we've been on over the last couple of years. So welcome aboard. There's all kinds of, you know, election time is always awkward as well, because, you know, we said goodbye to six-year selectman Paul Schubert. So I just wanted to take a minute and just say thank you to him for his hard work. Oh, you know, over the last two decades on the CEF and the school board and also here tonight. So let me just outline the process for the, the board reorganization. So it's a little different according to Robert's rules than our typical motions and seconds. I will open up the floor for nominations for chair first. It does not need to be seconded. I will ask if there's any other nominations and a second person could be nominated. There's also no discussion in order to keep decorum in this matter that we'll go straight to a vote once we, once the nominations are in. At that point, when a new chair is voted in, he or she will immediately take over the gavel and the meeting. So, and then we'll go from that to vice chair and then obviously for the clerk position. So I would like to take this opportunity and nominate Carrie Thompson, who's been the vice chair over the last incredibly intense year and has been at every agenda preparation meeting as chair for the select board for the upcoming year. If, is there any other nominations? Oh, Carrie, would you accept the nomination?
I accept that nomination. Thank you, Diane.
Yeah, are there any other nominations for chair? Okay, hearing none. We'll go straight to a roll call vote, beginning with Jack.
Jack Creighton abstains.
Corey.
Define unmute Corey Evans, I.
Jean.
Jean Healy Dipple, I.
Diane Kennedy, I.
Carrie Thompson, I.
Thank you, Carrie. The meaning is yours.
And thank you. I have my imaginary gavel here. We will now proceed to nominations for vice chair. And I would like to take the moment to nominate Corey Evans for vice chair.
I would accept such a nomination.
Okay, do we have any other nominations for vice chair? All right, seeing none, we will take a roll call vote for Corey Evans for a vice chair, beginning with Jack.
Jack Creighton, I.
Corey Evans abstain.
Jean Healy Dipple, I.
Diane Kennedy, I.
Harry Thompson, I. All right, congratulations, Corey.
Congratulations, Corey.
Thank you all.
Excited to have you as vice chair. All right, now moving on for nominations for clerk. Do we have?
I would like to, I would like to nominate Jean Healy Dipple.
Okay, thank you, Jack. Jean, would you accept this position or nomination? All right, are there any other nominations for clerk?
I would nominate our former chair Diane Kennedy as well.
Okay, Diane, would you accept this nomination?
I will, another runoff.
Okay, all right. So we have two nominations for clerk, Jean Healy Dipple and Diane Kennedy. I believe because we have two different candidates, everyone just needs to say which candidate they will vote for. All right, so starting with Jack, we will take a roll call vote for clerk.
Jack Creighton, Jean Healy Dipple.
Corey Evans, Diane Kennedy.
Jean Healy Dipple, Jean Healy Dipple.
I. Diane Kennedy, Diane Kennedy.
Oh, this is brutal. I'm honestly really torn on this vote. I love you both. I love both of your expertise. I'm really struggling here. Um, I am going to, I'm going to vote for Jean.
Thank you.
So Jean, congratulations on clerk. We are so excited to have you in general, but also to have your legal knowledge, especially this next year. Okay, so congratulations to the new reorganization. I'm really excited for the new energy, and I actually am hoping we're going to be here at our next meeting in person, but we'll talk about that later in the meeting. All right. Moving on to our permits, licenses, and events, so we have a few different applications for extension of premises and then some transient vendor licenses. I believe Jen Orem is going to be joining us to talk about the outside seating for food and beverage services by both Ava Caccina and Red Lion. Hi, Jen.
How are you?
What, how are you?
Welcome. I'm doing very well. I think we're looking for, the, I think we're doing Ava Caccina first. Is that correct?
Yes, Ava Caccina is on here first, and I know they sent us a map for outdoor dining. I believe it was the packet. If everyone wants to glance at it right now, if you haven't seen it yet, they have a new setup for outdoor dining. I know we haven't approved them for outdoor dining before, correct?
That's correct. And so we, we follow the same process as we did at the, when it was during COVID. I don't know if Annette Agostino is in the audience, but if she is, she is the owner, she met with the committee that's still comprised of the event committee, and we met with police, fire, and reviewed everything, and it was unanimous. She just is going to be taking one parking spot right out front of Ava Caccina. And then she had already reached out to DPW, and they said that they can get those, those blocks around the edge of things this week most likely, and so then we will send out, do an inspection on site as soon as they open. So this will be a welcome change for her to get some outside seating. Last year was a little bit overwhelmed with everything, and so we didn't see any issues with the application.
Okay, and I do know that this is something just generally that people in town seem to really like and want, regardless of pandemic timing. It seems like, I know, outdoor dining is, is growing in popularity and people really like it. So Jen, are there any other problems we should be worried about? I assume this is like safety-wise, it's been approved with police and fire.
Correct. They both are there, and Chief Sylvia and Officer Lawrence, the safety officer, were both fine with the application.
Okay, all right. Are there any other questions about this particular, oh, hi, chief? If anyone has a question for the chief, he's here. Any other questions about this particular location? All right.
This was pretty straightforward.
What, what, what'd you say, Corey?
I was just saying, it seemed pretty straightforward to me.
All right, seeing none, would we like to make a motion?
I'd like to move to approve this for Ava Caccino outside seating.
Thank you, Jack. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we will vote on this now with a roll call vote.
Jack Creighton, I'm very proud to vote I. This is a town institution. They've worked very hard. So happy to vote I.
Corey Evans drinks around, Jack, I.
Jean Healy Dipple, I.
Diane Kennedy, I.
Harry Thompson, I. Now we're all craving Ava Caccina, so good job with that.
Absolutely.
All right, moving on to the Red Lion. I believe this is only for one day for June 27th, Jen, but give us an update on that.
That's correct. So when the board did the new license for their property, if the, if the owners were going to do any extensions beyond what was conditioned on that license, they were to come in and request. In this particular case, it's for, after a wedding that ends at 10:00 to go into the Jazz Club, which is only licensed for three days a week and not on a Sunday. That is also below ground, below grade, so it's, it's a fairly quiet space. It's not an extension within the barn. So like, we will continue to do any extensions for this premises we will bring to the board.
All right, Gil, I see you're here to join us too. Welcome.
Hi, thank you. How are you?
We're great. How are you? Just give us a quick update on what you want to do.
Yeah, so it's, one day our clients just requested a, an extension to their, their event, and we have about 80 people for the actual wedding. They're expecting about 35 to 40 guests for a quick after-party, and we suggested the cave or the tavern. There is definitely the option in the cave, as this is not permitted on Sunday. The original wedding was supposed to be on Saturday, so we just request with the town if there's an option to have the, the extension for that one. It's June 27th for a small party in the Jazz Club.
All right, thank you, Gil. Are there any questions for Gil or Jen about this? Jack, is that your hand or just a finger?
Yeah, I'm trying to figure it out. I'm technically challenged. Yeah, when you originally, this wedding was originally for Saturday, and so it wasn't an issue. And so when they moved it to Sunday, it became an issue.
One of the rescheduled events from last year, and then we've had some challenges with the dates from last year to this year. As you know, now we're fully back to to capacity, and now we have still some reduced guest counts and all this, but because of the move of time, especially with the hotel rooms, we used to have some, a lot more hotel rooms available with the course that we're in, which is not available anymore. Now we're limited to just the Red Lion, so we're trying to accommodate, and depending on the dates, we have some challenges on the timing and the license conditions and, and all that, so.
Okay, my, my concern is that, and, and understanding that, that's why I asked the question. My concern is, you know, town's been pretty clear that we don't want this to evolve into a late night situation. So an accommodation for COVID-related rescheduling, I don't have a problem with, but I would have a problem if we start seeing a lot of these extensions.
No, and, and once again, I want to, I want to make sure everybody, we are all on the same page. This is a one-time off. We've had a couple requests a couple months ago as the full calendar of the year. It is a one-time off. We're not expecting multiple requests as a change throughout the year. And as we discussed, when we renewed the license, when we actually applied for the full license, the conditions were to go back to the original 2020, like 2000 license conditions in order to like really assess the viability of the changes applied to the condition. And I see Mrs. Dipple, congratulations on your appointment. That we're all trying to work together to like make it happen and to make sure that in order to be able to reconsider these conditions, in the meantime, we're just very, very meticulously anticipating whichever condition we try to amend on the one by one case.
Okay, I, I know Diane, I think I saw your hand before you both put up your virtual hands.
No, I was, I was looking for it. And then Jean. No, just really quickly, what are the hours that you're asking for extension?
So we're talking about 10, the regular hours for the Jazz Club are until 1:00 AM. At this point, the party in the, in the barn starts at 10:00 as permitted by the, the current license on Sunday. And we're looking until midnight, possibly 1:00 totally open, as we already have a few hours of event, and it is pretty much an open, open matter as the board see fit, I won't say.
So 10 to 1:00 ultimately, because that's.
That would be the latest, yes.
Okay, Jean.
Um, so I just want to note for the record, because I am an embitter to the Red Lion, and I'm gonna requeue slash abstain myself from the proceedings. Anything I will say will be in my personal capacity, and I've got nothing to say right now.
That's totally understandable, and thanks for clarifying that, Jean. Corey.
Yeah, I, you know, we've talked previously this board about a little bit of discomfort about having events in, in the barn to 10 o'clock all the time. I think this is a really, I think this kind of accommodation makes a lot of sense, moving to an existing area that, you know, it's smaller. I certainly feel for anyone who was disrupted last year. So this is, I can support this. I think this is a reasonable request as it stands right now.
Okay, yeah, no, I think we all know someone that's had to play catch-up with, with rescheduling a wedding, so I know that you have your job cut out for you, Gil, with trying to get weddings rescheduled. Yeah, all right. Are there any other questions or comments on this issue? If not, we can make a motion.
So moved.
Okay, Jack, I think, can you clarify, Jack, just what hours we want to do? What he just said, just repeat it for us, so the motion is official.
What was, what would, give me the hours again, please.
I believe 10 to 1:00, is that correct?
Okay.
Monday, June 27th.
Yeah.
Okay, I amend that we extend, approve an extension from 10 to 1:00 on June 27th.
Second.
We have a second. All right, roll call vote.
Jack Creighton, I.
Corey Evans, I.
Diane Kennedy, I.
Jean Healy Dipple abstain.
Carrie Thompson, I. All right, thank you, Gil.
Thank you very much.
Good luck with all the wedding planning.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, moving on to the transient vendor licenses. Jen, I believe we have three of them, correct? Oh, you're muted, Jen.
Yes, we have three applications, the same three that apply every year. And they've all submitted their applications. At least two have already been inspected by the Board of Health. The third has not. I know, I, I sent a memo because there, I believe there was a conversation. So I just thought it would be helpful to have, for everyone to have the existing conditions that are per zoning decision from 1991 that's, that sit currently and will remain on any transient vendor licenses being utilized. Mostly this was specific, that, that those conditions are specific to the beach and government island. And then I posed additional conditions based on what I understood. The Sandy Beach conversation was, it's up to the board. Obviously, I don't know if you want to discuss the memo, or you just want to move forward, or I don't know. So I would just pair it for both.
Yeah, and I know that we did start to bring this up when discussing this with Sandy Beach, so I kind of feel like that conversation was a little bit left in limbo, so I do want to hear what the board has to say or what questions you have. Corey, I saw your hand first.
Yeah, I was, I was looking at the, the additional conditions and you know, I'm certainly, you know, I understand the concerns and, and I understand kind of where they're coming from. I'm not quite sure if I think that these are the conditions that, that would really address the problem. I, I think the first question I have is, the first thing I think is clear is, is the no music restriction, I think, is, is easy to get behind. And I kind of wonder why we might not just do that town-wide, because I don't really think there's any neighborhood that wants an ice cream truck music blasting, you know, by being reasonable about it at least. However, the other restrictions, you know, it just, it's no vendor staying longer than two hours. I, I think we need to flesh that out a little bit more. Is that per day? Is that at a time? Because they're going to drive around the block and come back. We also have kind of competing things here where we say if two vendors are there and the third vendor arrives, one, one must leave, but what if they're within their two-hour window? I just, I, I don't think we're quite there yet where the, the kind of the hours restriction, I don't think that's really solving the problem. I think that's a little bit from my point of view.
No, thank you for expressing that, Corey. Jen, do you have a follow-up?
I do. I just, in the zoning conditions, that there's, there's supposed to be no more than two at one time, so they're supposed to per pass. One of the issues with this decision is enforcement, right? So exactly, so the enforcement officer isn't going to be going down and saying, you know, so-and-so, you have to leave because they're on site, on building site. So this, these are just throwing spaghetti at the wall in hopes of picking a couple that might alleviate some of the concerns. And maybe I thought possibly, and they're just my ideas, quite honestly. And so I was thinking narrowing it down to the days of the week as opposed to the weekend where it's the busiest, and there was concern of the trucks going across the, the parking lot and things like that. So, you know, we could do it in baby steps or how, obviously, what you think is best, but these are just sort of spaghetti ideas.
No, I appreciate that. Diane.
So just a couple things on the, on the music. I have to somewhat disagree, but maybe take in a little different direction. Because when I read the proposed conditions, I thought, you know, you can't really say what a decibel, you can't say low decibels unless you give them a decibel. Like, you know, that's one of those, there's no answer to that. So, and I also think that a lot of what these vendors do, and believe me, I, I have heard this particular vendor that uses really loud rock and roll music, and it's incredibly disruptive, and it goes on and on, and it's annoying. Having said that, it's also when they go through neighborhoods, which is also what this transient vendor license gives them the ability to do. When they go through neighborhoods, that's the, you know, that childhood spark of the ice cream man's coming down the street. So I wouldn't want to completely do away with the music. I think we could just add some guidelines to the conditions that, you know, we, we do expect that the music volume be kept at, at, you know, minimal, but not conditioned it, because I think it, to Jen's point, it, there's an enforcement issue. And then the other thing we brought up at the last meeting, when Annette Sawchuk was here, was whether we could ask them to park at that closed end of the beach up, you know, the north end of the beach and not be, you know, driving through and being loud and, and with kids running across the parking lot. So if, if that is allowed by the town, because it's town land, I would be inclined to say that's your post. And in the zoning bylaws, you know, the bylaws for transient vendors will make it such that there's only two at a time, and I, I think there's a limitation on how long they can stay as well.
Yeah, no, that's a good point, Diane. I do, it does sound like there are some better safety options for the parking lot, which is what we talked about last time, and you just brought up again. I do think that could help. I, I'm also a little conflicted about the music. Jean?
Um, so I think Diane, the idea to put the vendor outside the gates, if that's what you're talking about, I think that they used to do that, like two years past at Sandy Beach, and that was a good idea, because with the music, I'm going to say with the, well, I'll say a few things about the music. If you have children that want ice cream, they will find that truck. They don't need music, including at Sandy Beach. They will look up, they will scan, they will see the truck.
Or adults, adults want it too.
Yeah, yeah. I, I will say, as an adult, I find the music insanely annoying, including when I'm at the beach. And I feel for people who are grappling with that, also from a zoning enforcement perspective. Even if you have a certain decibel level, having gone through this on the planning board, it's, it's just really hard to enforce. And so I think it's all or nothing. You, you know, you're just going to have to accept that there's music or there's not. I'm probably erring on the side of not, because I do think the children will find the ice cream regardless of the music. And I, I would strongly recommend that we get the truck to a safer spot, because when it does park in Sandy Beach, sort of in the middle, it really can be a significant hazard for the kids.
All right, that's a good point. Yeah, Jen.
Um, and I did talk to one or two vendors that, just giving them, because we're a little late on issuing these permits, and they're all fine, because they're all extremely busy, because everybody's so excited for outside. But just a couple of the ideas about, I don't believe that one truck has music and one does, so they were excited to have a specific location to go to. They felt that that was much better, so I don't think that's going to be an issue. And, and and another word that we could put in, if, if you want to allow it in the townwide, but not at the beaches, the music, you could say a reasonable, a reas, you know, say reasonable, but I kind of agree, all or nothing, but it's whatever you feel comfortable with, obviously.
I, I was, I think that's a good point, because I was thinking, I know that for the beach, I think it would make sense to possibly cut the music, but for getting business for this truck in other areas, the music, I think, is what gets a lot of the business, so I don't want to just completely destroy business in other areas of town. You know what I mean? I, I, it makes me feel a little guilty. I, so I'm, I'm torn about the music too. Although I think we're lucky to live in a town where this is a problem that we're actually little perspective check, everyone.
Thank you for that.
We're lucky to live in this town. We're lucky to live in this town where this is what we're spending time with something. All right, I, I see three hands, Corey.
Um, on the, on the, I understand that the existing zoning, uh, limits two trucks. And so before these additional conditions, if a third truck arrived, it was, they just could, had to keep on driving. Is that kind of the understanding? So, you know, I, I think we just have to, it's an A or B here, whether we want the third truck to be able to kick out the existing truck, which may already have a line and all these kinds of things, or we just say, hey, we're full, you know, you keep on driving. I'm, I'm kind of leaning towards the latter, saying if a third truck arrives and there's no slot, you can't stop. I think that's a lot easier to enforce, just from my perspective.
Yeah, I kind of agree, Jen.
Yes, I, I think that makes sense. And just, I'm sure you all realize this, but all three of these are permitted throughout the South Shore. So we're just one on a, on a myriad of stops. Um, so it, they'll just move on if there's no place to park.
So, I mean, it seems like we are in agreement about the, the location for where they park at Sandy Beach. It seems like we are in agreement about those changes. Am I reading the vibes of the room on that one?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. All right, what, what are, besides the music part, is there anything else we're unsure about for these changes?
The, the only thing I, I want to bring up, and I'm not bringing it up as, as having my mind made up about it, but one of the things we did discuss was the snack shack sells most of the same items as one of the trucks. So one is known as, which they don't do hand-packed ice cream at the, at the Sandy Beach, um, snack shack. They don't do Dell's lemonade, so, but they do do, you know, the, the little ice cream cones and the popsicles and things, um, that, that vendor does. So that, I just putting it out there that that was something Annette had asked us to consider.
One thing I meant to ask last time too, I don't know if anyone knows this, is there a price difference between the snack shack and this ice cream truck? Does, does anyone know about that? I was actually curious if there was going to be a price difference for people. None of you may know. It was just something that popped up in my head. All right, Jean?
I don't recall a significant price difference. Um, I do take your point about not wanting to be a Grinch. I think that the music is most annoying when you're sitting at the beach for an hour and they're sitting at the beach for an hour. Yeah. And so maybe there's a compromise to be had here where it is no music at the beach, but when you're in neighborhoods, as long as you keep moving, you know, like you can't sit at the neighborhood for like an hour. You have to keep circulating for, you know, people in their homes too, which they're, they're going to probably do as a matter of business anyway, but you know, maybe there's a compromise for the, you know, some of the neighborhoods with the big subdivisions that it's fun for, you know.
No, I totally agree. Maybe we make it as soon as that truck pulls into the beach, the music has to be turned off. Something like that. Corey?
I was just going to comment on, you know, I understand the concerns about, um, you know, what products are kind of sold where, however, I think that's really outside of the scope that we decide. I mean, that's really a market competition thing, who inventory is what, that's not our, our purview whatsoever. So I don't, I don't really think we should get into that. I would, I'm comfortable with just no music in Cohasset. I think, yeah, as we kind of slice this up, it gets a little bit messy and, and hard to, uh, hard to enforce. I know it's a little grinchy, but, uh, I also know that my kids too know exactly where that notice truck is all the time. So without.
Definitely. Thank you, Corey. It seems like we have, uh, some division about the music, but it, I feel like we agree on everything else. Jack?
Um, I would say that no music on the beach.
Okay.
They'll know that. For the neighborhoods, it's kind of neat when you're a kid to hear the, the, the music at a distance coming around. But I think what you do when they arrive, you give them, when you arrive and you stop, music goes off.
So maybe it can be when the truck's driving, the music can be going, but when the truck is stopped, the music can be off.
Turn it off. Easy, easy to understand. And of course, they'll slow down a lot when they get to their stop, which we want them to slow down when they're near our children.
Less than 20 miles per hour.
And then, then we have, then we have a very clear, understandable standard. Easy, easy to understand, easy to enforce.
All right, so I feel like we need to make some separate motions here, just because we have a, some particular rules for one of them. Yes, Jen?
I apologize, I can't find my hand. Um, so I, to go back to the difference of product, the one thought process I had, I really didn't feel we could differentiate. I think it would have to be a blanket. So one of the ways I thought to address that, you know, for Sandy Beach, but also being fair to the vendors was to, to limit them for Monday through Friday. So that was another proposal, unless you want to have them seven days a week. So I didn't know, it's splitting hairs, but that was one of the thought processes behind that.
Okay. I'm torn. Go ahead, Corey.
I, I mean, I can try to make a motion here if, if you'd like.
Sure, yes.
Um, I would like to make a motion that we approve, uh, the three, uh, transient vendors as listed in our packet, um, with the, uh, with the existing 1991 conditions. In addition to, um, there will be, uh, no music played at Sandy Beach or Government Island. Uh, there will be no music played when vehicles are stopped. Vehicles are allowed to play music, uh, at a reasonable decibel while traveling through town. And vendors must park in the designated location by the Sandy Beach Association. And I think we're covered with the existing for, for two per day. I don't think, that's already existing. I don't think we'll change that. So I believe that those are the restrictions we've discussed.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, we have a second roll call vote, starting.
Could I just, could I just make one quick comment?
Yeah.
Corey, could, could you just, um, like, uh, read out the three transient vendors? Because while we're, they're in front of us, the public at home may not.
They're on, right on our agenda, Corey.
I have to find my unmute. The three, uh, transit vendors are Jack's Ice Cream, Dell's Lemonade, and, uh, no.
Where we go?
I, I think you meant Zach's Ice Cream, although maybe Jack has a secret ice cream truck too.
Exactly.
I think it's back.
Don't worry about, don't worry about, don't worry about conflict of interest or any actual stuff. It's Zach's.
It's Zach's Ice Cream, not Jack's. Okay. All right.
So correct.
You clarifying Diane. Jack, your hands up. Did you have another?
No, I meant to take it down.
Okay. All right, so we have a motion, we have a second. Now we have a roll call vote for this, beginning with Jack.
Jack, right, and I.
Corey, I have an eye.
Jeanne Haley Dippledip.
Diane Kennedy, I.
Harry Thompson, I. All right. Hey, thank you, Jen.
Thank you so much. Have a great night, everyone.
We might all need to show up to town hall to sign those, I believe, right? Okay, Tracy can email.
I thought you were going to say show up at Sandy Beach to have an ice cream.
We can do that too. All right, moving on to our investment in five-year bond update with Paula Lynn Harris, I believe, is going to be joining us for that. I see Paula coming in. Hi again, Paula.
Hello.
Yep, we can see you. Hi, thank you for coming again. All right. You got a double header tonight. Our investment update and five-year.
Hat trick, this is going to be great.
All right.
Yes, the investment, this is, this is out of March 31st, um, the, uh, just a review of how we've been doing with our investments. And I'm happy to report that everything is positive for the quarter. Um, we're running above benchmarks for the quarter, um, for longer time periods. In general, the expendable permanent trusts are running a little bit below their respective benchmarks and our OPEB ones are running a little bit above their respective benchmarks. Um, the expendable investments are up 0.92, 0.2 for the quarter and year-to-date, 9.3 to 11.3 for one year, 4.6 to 7.7 for three years, 3.2 to 5.5 for five years and up 3.5 to 4.7 since the inception. Permanent trust funds are up 2.4 for the quarter and year-to-date, 19.8 for the year and up 9.9 for three years, 7.6 for five years and 7.4 since the inception. OPEB is up 2.8 to 4.2 for the quarter and calendar year-to-date, up 30, um, to 40 for the year, of 9.7 to 9.8 for three years, 9.2 to 10.4 for five years, 6.9 and 8.4 since inception. So our investment earnings with, um, with both all these trust funds, but, but also, um, like step stabilization and, uh, general funds is up over $344,000 for the quarter. I think March 31st.
Okay. Thank you, Paula. Is, is just your own opinion, is that better or worse than we thought it would be in a pandemic year?
I, well, I guess it's good because, um, I was happy with, we're, we're pretty much on target with our benchmarks. There's no big variances, so that's good.
Okay.
And I think overall, like, the market's done better than I would have expected in a pandemic, but.
Yeah.
So I'll take it.
Paul. Okay, any, any questions or comments for Paula on this?
Let it keep rolling.
I don't see any. All right, moving on to the five-year bond.
Okay. All right, um, we are currently in the final stages of, of two borrowings. All right. The, tonight, alls we really need to do is take one vote, um, and that vote needs to be signed by, um, the clerk of the select board. And typically that vote is read and there'd be a signing. Um, if you don't have it, I don't know if you have that, Jean. It's called, it's in the packet. It was Select Board Vote Dash Cohasset Bonds. It starts with vote of the select board.
Each point.
But what I'm also going to do is, is talk a little bit about those bonds in the band so that everyone knows what's going on, because there is a series of papers that need to be signed.
Okay.
I dropped them off with Tracy, so at your convenience. I just need a majority. I don't need everybody. If that, you can review the paperwork, ask whatever questions you might have. You can just reach out to me anytime. And then at your leisure, if you could come in and sign, and once we have three, I'll take the papers and pass them on to the appropriate parties and get all that taken care of.
Okay, so don't we still need to vote tonight though, Paula, or you're saying we just? I saw it, Diane.
There is a vote. Yep, it's called the, the votes. Do we all have that?
Yes.
I don't know, Chris, if you can bring that up on the, the screen, maybe that would be helpful.
This is in the packet. Everyone just takes a second to find it in the packet.
I just wanted to tell Jean to take a big gulp of water. It's very long.
They didn't tell you beforehand, did they?
Yes, do you want to put up on the screen so somebody can read it?
Sure, go ahead, Chris. That might be easier.
Do you have it in front of you, Jean? It was in the, do you have this email, Jean?
Jean?
Uh, hold on.
Yes. Sorry. Yes, I have, I had a few questions first before we vote on it, but.
Yeah, no, of course.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
I have it, I have it. So just for the folks listening at home, just to clarify, what we're doing is we're taking a variety of different previously authorized expenditure, some of which were bonded previously and are being rolled over, is that right? And some of which were not, but were authorized to be bonded. And we're doing it now in one big bond. So for example, that includes, um, equipment for the ambulance, that includes the prior town hall plans from 2018 for the hall that was never built, but that, that's a hundred thousand that was authorized.
Right.
That includes, you know, we're rolling up a whole bunch of little debt that unless we hit a million, we couldn't otherwise bond it, right? And so now we're putting into one longer term.
Correct, correct. I, if you want, I could go through the whole thing. I have a, to go into a little bit more detail, do you want me to do that first and do the vote after, if that, if that would be helpful?
Uh, has everyone feeling it?
Yes.
Maybe a quick summary, Paul? I'm not sure we need.
Is that prepared to go through?
Corey, was that a half a hand?
Half a hand. I, I, I found Jean's explanation to be very clear as well, so.
I agree. All right.
So, yes, you're right. There's two outstanding bands.
All right, go ahead.
There's two outstanding bands. One of them is taxable and we are re-rolling that over and we are, we're able to take some of that out and actually move it to the tax exempt, which is going to save us money. So that's, that's the first one. Um, this is for the private roadway to see the acres property. Uh, we built a road in there. The tax, the residents there are being assessed to pay back this loan, so the town isn't paying for it, and that's why it's taxable. It's not for the town as a whole. It's for those specific residents, kind of like a private use type of thing. Century Bank won that bid and at 1.5%, and it's a one-year. All right, there's more information in the papers if you want that. The larger borrowing is several things that we have been kind of rolling in bands year after year. Bound Brook Dam, Town Hall Design, Boulder Street Bridge, stuff like that. And now we voted a lot of things last, um, spring, like the four-wheel-drive loader, a dump truck, ambulance, a powered, uh, ambulance cart, and, um, so we're adding that into it. And then as much as we possibly can from the taxable part into this tax-exempt bond. So that puts us close to $2 million. It's going to be paid in five years. It, uh, sat out as 1.975 million and the winning bid was Fidelity Capital Markets at 0.33% as the true interest cost. Although they put in there, they want a 4% coupon. So what they've basically done is given us $147,000 in order to do that. So that's why our true encross is the same, but we're going to be paying out at four, but we get a whole bunch of money upfront to do that, basically. And what we've done with that money, according to the town meeting vote, and in the overview, I, I did clip out a piece of the actual town meeting minutes. We are spending approximately $100,000 to pay down some of that bond and, uh, $50,000, well, less than $50,000 is, is being used for the issuance costs.
Okay.
So that's what we're doing with all that. Does that?
That's a great, that's a perfect summary, Paula. That's a perfect summary, I think. Does anyone, I know it's a lot to look at and a lot to digest, and we've all seen it in the packet. Does anyone have any questions or follow-ups for her? Do we feel comfortable making a, a vote, making a motion?
So is the motion on me right now? And I'm going to read this, right?
Yes, welcome, clerk.
All right.
All right, so my motion is, I, the clerk of the select board of the town of Cohasset, Massachusetts, the town, certify that at a meeting of the board held June 8, 2021, of which meeting all members of the board were duly notified and at which a forum was present, the following votes were unanimously passed, all of which appear upon the official record of the board in my custody, voted that the sale of the 1,880,000, um, general obligation municipal purpose loan of 2021 bonds of the town dated June 17, 2021, the bonds to Fidelity Capital Markets, a division of National Financial Services LLC, at the price of $2,024,548.85 and accrued interest, if any, is hereby approved and confirmed. The bond shall be payable on October 1st of the years and in the principal amounts and bear interest at the respective rates as follows. Year 2021, amount $445,000, interest rate 4%. Year 2022, amount 420,000, interest rate 4%. Year 2023, amount 365,000, interest rate 4%. Year 2024, amount 330,000, interest rate 4%. Year 2025, amount 320,000, interest rate 4%. Further voted that in connection with the marketing and sale of the bonds, the preparation and distribution of a notice of sale and preliminary official statement dated May 26, 2021, and a fine, a final official statement dated June 3, 2021, each in such form as may be approved by the town treasurer, be and hereby are ratified, confirmed, approved and adopted. Further voted that the town treasurer and the select board be and hereby are authorized to execute and delivering a continuing disclosure undertaking in compliance with SEC Rule 15C 2-12 in such form as may be approved by bond council to the town, which undertaking shall be incorporated by reference in the bonds for the benefit of the holders of the bonds from time to time. Further voted that we authorize and direct the town treasurer to establish post issuance federal tax compliance procedures and continuing disclosure procedures in such forms as the town treasurer and bond council deemed sufficient, or if such procedures are currently in place to review and update said procedures in order to monitor and maintain tax exempt status of the bonds and to comply with relevant security laws. Further voted that each member of the select board, the town clerk and the town treasurer be and hereby are authorized to take any and all such actions and execute and execute and deliver such certificates, receipts and other documents as may be determined by them or any of them to be necessary or convenient to carry into effect the provisions of the foregoing votes. or any of them to be necessary or convenient to carry into effect the provisions of the foregoing votes. I further certify that the votes were taken at a meeting open to the public, that no vote was taken by secret ballot, that a notice stating the place, date, time, and agenda for the meeting, which agenda included the adoption of the above votes, was filed with the town clerk in a copy thereof posted in a manner conspicuously visible to the public at all hours in or on the municipal building that the office of the town clerk is located, or if applicable, in accordance with an alternate method of notice prescribed or approved by the attorney general, as set forth in 940 CMR 29.03 to be at least 48 hours, not including Saturdays, Sundays, and legal holidays prior to the time of the meeting, and remain so posted at the time of the meeting that no deliberations or decision in connection with the sale of the bonds were taken in executive session, all in accordance with General Law Chapter 30A, Sections 18 through 25, as amended, further suspended, supplemented, or modified by the executive order of the Governor of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts suspending certain provisions of the Open Meeting Law Chapter 30A, Section 20, dated March 12, 2020, dated June 8, 2021. Clerk goes.
All right. We have a second, thank God. All right, moving to a vote. Starting with Jack. Jack, you're muted, but I assume you said aye.
Jack, aye. No, I.
Corey Evans, aye.
Jean Healy-Dippel, aye. Diane Kennedy, aye.
Harry Thompson, aye. Thank you, Paula.
Thank you. All right, just see Tracy when you come into the office and she'll get the papers for you, and we should be good to go.
Sounds good. All right, have a good night. All right, moving on to our civility policy update. I believe we have Paul Durensis here to help with that, and Chris, if we can promote Paul Durensis as well. All right. Hi, Paul and Chris. Paul, I don't know if you can hear us yet. There you are.
Hi, Carrie, congratulations.
Oh, thank you, thank you. Good to see you. Okay, so this is our first time talking about this. I think that we wanted to just discuss it tonight and then possibly vote on it, but I want to hear both of your thoughts on it. Chris or Paul, either of you can start.
I'll let Paul take the first step here.
Okay. Go ahead, Paul.
So, the MMA drafted a best practices on civility that I helped write because so many employees of towns felt that they were not treated well. And we needed to have a mechanism in place to protect the town from liability. Ultimately, there's always a risk of lawsuits brought by employees who feel they've been mistreated. But it's not just employees. It's also the public and people who want to speak at meetings. There's a lawsuit going on now, a civil rights lawsuit involving a town where the issue of public comment and what's allowed to be said at a public comment period was so uncivil that it was being shut down, and now there's a claim that that violates civil rights and so on. So it's, it's an area that we felt we needed to have clarity and to have some roles in place. And with the best practices that we prepared, we put in some procedures for some remedies so that people who felt that something had gone wrong and the deliberative process had a way to present an issue to the board as a whole. And we put in some language that would allow the board to address the issue amongst themselves. It's one thing for equal members of a board to discuss civility. It's another thing for employees or the public to have to come forward and and try and raise the issue of civility in the context of already being being subject to lack of stability, there's some reluctance and some worry about potential repercussions of doing that. So we wanted some other way to address that. So we came up with, with a formal policy, one that would be adopted, not just for select boards, but for all boards, for all people who are entrusted with the responsibility of governing. To be civil, to be civil amongst each other, and to be civil with the public, and to be civil with employees.
All right, thank you for that description, Paul. It definitely feels like in today's climate, this is something that was needed on a state level and possibly a town level. Chris, do you have anything to add?
So I, I think, I think the draft has been circulated, and it's pretty much the.
I can't find it.
I, I'll make sure that Tracy does have a copy of it again. So, the, I took a little too, I had Mary take a look at it. You know, it, it's, just one more, it's one more tool, I think, to help people remember why we're all here. People can disagree in a respectful way. There's, there's really no reason that people have to be rude and difficult. It happens. It happened just yesterday. Our town clerk was, was almost literally assaulted by someone who was angry about a beach sticker. The beach stickers expired in March, but it didn't matter. I mean, she had to close the door. She, she literally had to walk around for 15 minutes to calm herself down. It was exceptionally inappropriate conduct, and that shouldn't happen. Now, again, people can get angry. It's, it's the nature of life, and I think the pandemic has most certainly fueled it even worse than it has been. That said, every tool that helps people understand what conduct should be and how people should behave, and that, and that folks know that there's some kind of, you know, structure that, that helps shield them. We do have our anti-harassment by state law anyway protections, but this is a little bit different than that, right? It's, and for the most part, things have been pretty good. I mean, we've really been very fortunate. That said, I think we've all experienced, particularly, I think, in the last six months or so, as people have been tired and frustrated and, you know, that, that there's been a little, so I think it's very topical. I'm sorry that it is topical. It shouldn't have to be topical, but it is. And I think it's definitely worth looking at and, and thinking about. And again, it's something, as Paul said, that was drafted by the MMA, so it's not like this came out of, you know, me or Miriam or anybody else. It's a statewide recommendation from the association that represents every municipality and state. And, you know, I thank Paul for his work on this and others. And again, it's also a video that I think Diane had mentioned that she had seen, and I actually watched it while I was doing prep for town meeting two weeks ago. And I think we, I think we're making that available to everybody, too. It was really useful. Again, it was sad, some of the stories, I'm afraid, you know, like what I just shared, and I'm sure Carol's not very happy that I shared it, but I do think people need to know that. You, you know, it's not a, and again, this wasn't somebody, you know, I've said about something, they were, they were, they, they were screaming at her. I mean, and that's not okay. It's not okay to do that. So I think, I think this kind of a policy is really helpful. I do think it helps with the discussion, right? Because this really should, we should have a discussion about this stuff, and people should have some kind of understanding what the boundaries are. So I'm hopeful, again, and I thank Paul, and I thank everyone who put their time into it, that this will be, just helped the temperature it should be.
Yeah, no, thank you both for bringing this up and bringing it to our attention, and thank you, Paul, for writing it. In theory, I'll get to you, Diane, in one second. I saw you had your hand up. In theory, I, I think it seems like a great idea. I think my one question is just really, how is it enforceable? You know, I mean, I, I like that we could try to set this tone for all of us, you know, elected officials, employees, residents, citizens. I, I love the idea. I, Paul, I kind of just wanted your thoughts on, you know, I guess the enforceability aspect is my one concern or gray area for me.
So I have, have not seen the latest version of what's been circulated in Cohasset, but the version that we wrote for the MMA had provisions in there that if a private talk with a town official or a member of the public or whatever was not effective, there could be action taken by the board itself. And those actions include everything from the board voting a formal request for somebody to behave, to actually voting to censure someone who they felt was creating potential liability for the town. So.
Interesting. Okay.
There are, there is some teeth to it. It's not one, the teeth isn't something to be used lightly. There are procedures that need to be followed. But the, the ultimate point, speaking just as a lawyer, is that everything that you all do as select board members can create liability for the town. And anything that's done by any board member on any board or commission can create liability on the part of the town. Similarly, employees, what they say and do can create liability on behalf of the town. So we heard the situation where someone was unpleasant to the town clerk, but you could have a situation where a town employee was unpleasant to a citizen. It goes both ways. So the idea is not to single out any, any board or or the town versus the public, but the idea is to provide a means to address civility in a more formal way, not just a, a rhetorical call for civility, but actually some procedures that are public in nature, that, that the public can see that something is being done.
Okay, thank you, Paul. And I definitely think all of us on the board need to reread this at least another time if we haven't read it yet, or at least read it for a first time. Questions? Diane, I saw your hand up a little bit ago.
No, I, I just wanted to say that Cohasset actually was on the forefront of this issue, like in 2012. We, and it's in the committee handbook. There is a, we do have a policy that was adopted by the board back then. So it's probably worth looking at that, too, in the committee handbook. And I was on a Mass Select Board Association meeting today, and this was a very big topic because every town is really struggling with, you know, people are just kind of at their wits' end after the past year. And, and, you know, they're, they're losing their, you know, just losing their cool. And I think it's, I think this, more than anything, is, is an opportunity to just have that discussion policy and kind of tone everything down, almost like the speed limit, you know, just like chill. So that's it.
Thank you, noted. All right, Jean.
I haven't gotten a copy of the policy, so to the extent that there is one, it would be great to, or a proposed one.
Yeah, no, we, obviously, we all. I, I think we need to get it resent out to make sure everyone can see it and read it. I've glanced at it. I'd have to read it more thoroughly. But we definitely need to read it and then maybe consider voting on it. This was just on the agenda to bring it up and address it tonight. Jack?
Yeah, I have, I have also not received it. I also think it's a, it's a good issue. I think we have to be very careful of freedom of speech infringement. Sometimes speech is robust. I also think one of the things that we need to look at is what happens when town officials raise false charges against members of the public or town officials. We've had something that's just happened where some kind of allegation of a complaint was made against a border commissioner. I don't know all the details. We've had things where people have screamed at other town employees. They're gonna fire them while running down the street. So I think if we're gonna look at this issue, I think it's a good issue, and I think we need to be very careful. And, and I think the point that as public officials, that we need to be very, very careful that we do not use our public prerogatives, if you will, to go after people, to make charges that there's no basis for. And I think that, that this requires a robust discussion. I think we also have to understand that there's are some very serious potential free speech violations. I look forward to reading this, and I think it's a very fruitful thing for us to consider, and it's probably a lot broader than this. Thank you.
Thank you, yeah. And I think that, I like that it goes for everyone, and it, it kind of goes all directions for who's treating who civilly. And I'm assuming Paul and all of you are obviously protecting free speech with what you've written. But I think that the next step is for all of us to read this and really think about it, and think about if there's any certain parts we have problems with, and really just read it to figure out if we want to vote on it and adopt it. So I think it's a great thing for a future agenda, and we can make sure it gets sent out to everyone again, and that's gonna be a homework assignment. Any other final thoughts? Oh, yeah, no, go ahead, Paul, and then Corey.
Just on the issue of free speech, that's, Jack makes a good point. That's that case I'm just described to you that's ongoing, and just want to give you a flavor of that, that people came to a public comment session and essentially accused people on the board or their relatives of being racist and being guilty of, of hate crimes, that kind of thing. And the response was things like, you're a liar, and the people got up and walked out, and public comment was shut down and so on, leading to a quote civil rights lawsuit that someone's First Amendment rights were interfered with. That's winding its way through the courts, and we're watching it with great interest. It was completely uncivil. If, if the goal of civility, there was no civility to be found on any side, at, at, at the point where it became a bit of a fragrance. So again, I'm not
Okay.
Not blaming the public and not blaming the, the, the board. I'm trying to focus on the issue that First Amendment is an important ingredient to that. On the other hand, you simply can't let people start accusing other people of crimes at a public meeting.
Well said, and I think we need to all be thinking about these broader values of protecting free speech and considering civility as we're reading this policy and thinking about how it might impact the town. Corey?
Uh, yeah, kind of, kind of two things. One, there was a lot of kind of accessory paperwork to this meeting, a lot more than average. So I think this is why we're all kind of floating around.
Yeah.
It also kind of came in in dribs and drabs, so that made it really hard to keep track of. I know that, I just found that this, as well as the earlier thing we were speaking about, was on the, in the OneDrive, but wasn't in the packet. And it's just, it's really hard. If you get an email with some stuff, you think it's all there, but then you have a different set. So I think we just need to procedurally work on one unifying way of getting everything together and make sure it all comes at once. That way, we're not chasing 15 emails. That would make all our lives a lot easier. And, you know, I've got, this is obviously, obviously a complicated thing that's very important. But what's really clear, and I think we all understand this, civility begins with us. This board being civil, getting through things, we set the standard. We need to be, you know, the best version of ourselves. And, you know, we can make all the policies we want. It really comes down to us to act properly. And we've got a great group of people. I think we should set the standard for how we address complicated, you know, things in a very, you know, respectful, thoughtful, engaging manner. And that, I think, is gonna do way more help, help way more than, than even a policy will. So I just encourage all of you to keep that in mind. We're neighbors. We're all in this for the right reasons. And, you know, that's, this is where this begins, is here, in us. So thank you.
I think that's, that's beautifully said, Corey, and I really think that with the new energy of the board, that we can try to really set that tone and make that a goal of ours through the year to really try. and make that a goal of ours through the year to really try to be everything you just said that we should be. Jean?
Um, so really to sort of merge what you just said, Cory, with what you just said earlier, Carrie, in terms of, I think enforcement too. Like the board has a role in ensuring that we are protecting both the public and our town employees and our volunteers on commissions and boards to make sure that the government tools are being appropriately used to make sure that we're not engaging in uncivil behavior when we have disagreements with each other. And ensuring that the, and you know, we probably already frankly have existing policies on the books to ensure this. Whether it's retaliation, harassment, particularly within those who are working volunteering for the government. But I do think that it would be important to make sure setting the tone not only includes our interactions, but make sure that we are having a very clear message. If, if not oversight role of ensuring that others are also treating each other with respect notwithstanding, you know, people can have disagreements on the merits. That's totally fine. But you, you can't be misusing government resources and harassing each other and, you know, going after each other. That's just, that's not, that's not okay. And we need to start enforcing the existing policies.
Well said. I mean, I say this to my students all the time. I think we've, a lot of us have forgotten, and I blame a little bit of social media. But a lot of us have forgotten how to disagree in a civil way. And this isn't trying to squash disagreements. I think that's healthy and we want to have that as a board. And we were elected to disagree with each other and have these good debates and have these discussions and still be able to, you know, go have ice cream after or still be able to respect each other when we do disagree. So I think that's a really good point, Jean. And maybe we can have, I'm actually not entirely sure what we have in our current documents on some of these policies. I think you're right that they are in there, but I think maybe we can compare those to this policy. And Paul, we can invite you back to a future meeting and really dig in and talk about if we want to vote on it. Diane and then Cory. And then I think we can move on.
Just really quickly, I just want to quote former select board member Martha Yesz to be who used to always say, you can disagree, but you don't need to be disagreeable. So.
Cory, you have the final say on this.
Yeah, no, I was just gonna, uh, obviously, you know, I think Jean hit on something very important, which is we have a lot of things. I do, I do think that whatever policy we have, we really have to focus on the resolution part of it, not necessarily the rules, but how do we get through the process? Having a process which is open and very accommodating and very, uh, I would say objective. That way, if there is an issue, we have a procedure. That's what's going to really, it can't just be one person calling someone else out. And then it, it needs to be really, really, really tight and really, really understood. That way, if something does come up, we're not afraid to use it, but it also comes out with, with, with judgments that are correct and, and, and do justice. So thank you.
Well said. Okay. So homework assignment. Let's all really do a deep dive into this and read it. And Paul, we would love to have you back as we're planning on voting on it or what, what other questions we have after everyone's ready. Does that sound good?
Okay.
Okay. Thank you, Paul.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Okay. Moving on to our board committee appointment updates. We have several appointments to make, and I also believe we have to start with our discussion on the community preservation committee, changing those vote terms. We've discussed this before. I think I saw Russ Benetti in here if we want to promote him, just to do a quick reminder on this. So Diane, you might be able to explain this better than me, but this was, this is to fix a problem the CPC has with needing to stagger their elected terms. So the members aren't all coming up for appointment all at the same time to give the, the committee a little more, you know, viability. So I think that it's a really smart thing to do and pretty self-explanatory. Russ, you just want to say a quick hello and give us a reminder on why this matters. I see you. I'm trying to see if I can unmute you, Russ. Is anyone finding it possible to unmute Russ? It's not letting me.
How's that?
There you, there you are. Okay.
Oh, okay. Hi. Yeah, I, I'll tell you, somewhere about a month after we go back to in-person meetings, I'll figure out how to use. But, um, yeah, it, it'd be nice to have it staggered. Because for instance, I mean, I have the potential of having one, two, three. I've got two definitely, uh, the open seat and potentially a third. Uh, it would be nice to have a little continuity. I mean, I know everybody thinks their committee's special, but the CPC, it's nice to have both institutional knowledge as well as some stability in, in the terms without having a lot of new folks come in at once. Uh, not that I have anything against new folks. I'm always trying to encourage people to come in and step up to volunteer either for us or any other committee in town.
Thank you, Russ. I think that's well said. Are there any questions for Russ on this? Jean?
Um, remind me, how many folks are on the CPC right now?
There are nine.
Nine.
And the makeup is under the Community Preservation Act consists of somebody from housing. We're going to have to get a new person for that. Somebody from historical, which Susie Wadsworth is doing. We have a selectman. Uh, we have an opening on that. Uh, we have somebody from open space. We have, uh, did I see a portfolio housing? I think so. And we have three, and then we have three citizens at large. And that's, that's, that one probably more than others need to have some rotation other than everybody coming up at once.
No, I agree. The rotation's healthy. Yeah. Chris, did you have a follow-up on that?
Do you want me to show the proposed schedule so you can all?
Yeah, we showed it if you can. Jean, did you have a follow-up on Russ's comment? Your hand is still up while he's showing that. Okay.
Yeah, I was, I was just going to say, you know, what, one of, one of the benefits of walking around for weeks and weeks and meeting tons of new people and trying to educate them on the processes. I do think that there's a lot of interest
Yeah.
in various committees, including CPC. Um, and so I think it's great to also, you know, make sure that we're merging those with good institutional memory. Also with, you know, having a bench of, including new people, because we have a ton of new people in Cohasset. You know, we have 2,000 new voters within the last five years. That, that's a huge amount for the town.
Amazing. And I'm hoping especially all the new people you met, Jean, and those of us who've met new people, you know, that this will generate more excitement with getting some new people in. I feel like we always have that debate at all levels of government, you know, institutional memory with bringing in new change and new ideas. And both of those are important. So I think that this is a much needed shift for that. Diane?
I just wanted to say, Chris shares this thing. This is really focused on the three citizen at large seats, which are up the same year. Um, the other members are appointed by their own board. So if there's turnover within the planning board or housing authority, we'll, you know, we'll appoint to fill the unexpired part of the term. But this is really focused on the citizen petition, positions and getting more people involved. And we can't do that except every three years.
Yeah, I, I personally don't see any disadvantage with this change, so I'm, I'm absolutely for it. Are there, is, does anyone have any other questions or issues with it? If not, we can make a motion. Thanks for sharing, Chris.
Yeah. So this is the, uh, so I went, I went and re-researched this. And while the, the, the town meeting setup, when they set up the committee pursuant to state law, it was a select board that set the classes. I don't know why. So what, so I think it was just kind of certain committees got their names in first, so they were the three sentences at the end, and those became one class. And the, the, the goal here is to spread them out so that there's a, a, a citizen at large in any given year as opposed to waiting three years before their seats come up.
Right.
Now, since the select board member on this happens to not be here, uh, so you got to reappoint some new. We might actually, but I'm able to change this up a little bit. But what, what happens, instead of everyone having a three-year term, you'll see over the next three years, some of the seats would have either two-year terms or a one-year term to reset. And then they'd go back into their regular three-year terms at the, at the end of that cycle. And it would then create three new classes. You can see this, this is what they look like now. And you see this, this is all one group at the end, but we are sitting in every, in every cycle. So that, that's the goal of it. And, uh, and it took, I had to read a lot of minutes to find this stuff. I mean, it's, it doesn't have to be this exact way, but this is the way to seem to, to make the most sense, um, to make it work.
Jean?
So I'm just, so this is the first time I'm seeing this and I'm just trying to understand what, as a practical matter, we're talking about. So do we have three citizens at large that we won't have any open seats until 2024 if we adopt this as proposed? Cause that seems hard.
Yeah. It's a gene. What happened is that when this was set, the citizens were all the same class. All right. So the art citizen again until 2023. So the goal, the goal the select board is set, which, which is what was for this to have to set it up without cutting anyone's term short. To set up so that you'd eventually have one citizen seat up every year as opposed to three up every three years.
Yeah, no, I know that. I'm just saying as a practical matter, that means where it, it looks like you're elongating terms.
No, 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 no terms get elongated. So right now, the current terms, here, let me show this again.
So this, I'm just trying to understand the math.
Yeah. Yeah, no, no, I know. You, you have that chance to read the memo. So I, I, um, the, um, right now, the planning board, housing authority and historical commission seats are all up this year. They would normally get reappointed to three-year terms, whoever they happen to be. What the recommendation is to have the planning board seat be three and housing authority and assault congression be reduced to two-year terms. And then, um, and then in 2022 would be open space, select board, concom. Those seats are normally up then. You'd, you'd have a three-year term, a two-year term and a three-year term. And I picked which ones relatively randomly, but, um, and then citizen one, citizen two, citizen three, I just, you know, instead of, when they come back up for reappointment in 2023, one turn, one would get a one-year term and then a three-year term after that. One would get a two-year term and then a three-year term after that. One would stay three and three. So you're not cutting anybody's existing term short, just changing the reset one, one time. And then it re, it rejigged classes so that every cycle has at least one citizen. Does that make sense now?
May I clarify a little bit, Chris?
Go ahead, Cory.
You know, just, uh, same confusion here, but I think I just kind of figured out what the misunderstanding is. The 2023 expirations are still happening. We're not overriding those. We're just saying that at 2023, we're not going to push everybody to 2026. We're going to push one person 24, one person 25, one person 6. So we're following, the current expiration is still valid. We're just suggesting that the next set of terms be slightly adjusted for one cycle. That way we can get onto another cycle. Is that a good reference?
What explanation for it?
Yes, that's that. You said it, you said it better than I.
I didn't know what I said, so I'm glad somebody understood that.
All right. Are we all on the same page now with why we're proposing this? Any other comments or issues with it? If not, we can make a motion.
I move that we adopt the resetting of the terms as proposed by the town manager for the CPC appointments.
Second by Cory. Okay. Roll call vote, starting with Jack. You're on mute, Jack. I think you said I. I'm lip reading now, Jack.
Jack Creighton, aye.
Um, Jean Healy Dippled, I'm just going to abstain because I haven't quite internalized it.
Diane Kennedy, aye.
Carrie Thompson, aye. All right. Thank you. And thank you, Russ, for that explanation. All right. Thank you, Russ. Okay. Hopefully this will help. Have a good night. All right. Moving on to our 143 TV Board of Director appointment, we have two of them. Cory, I'm going to let you have the floor quickly to talk about this, but I know we have applications or applications from Marty and Keith Conforti. So Cory, give us an update.
Yeah. So, uh, 143 TV is in getting to be a butterfly mode. We have a lot of exciting stuff going on. We're really, really eager to make a splash this year, next year and kind of put 143 TV as a vibrant, very engaged, very visible, uh, community-based station. And, uh, getting people involved is obviously a huge part of that. We have two fantastic applicants, Keith and Marty. Keith has been valued, has been generous enough to been, to have come to our meetings recently and give his input. We've already found his impact on the vision for what we're doing going forward to be really, really, really excellent. This is, you know, one of his fields of expertise is, is vision and marketing and design. So he's going to be a great impact. Same thing with Marty. We're just really excited to have two, uh, two more people on the board. I think after this will be, we'll have one more slot open. So, um, please, and if anyone, uh, is excited about community television, excited about what's happening in town and wants to be part of it. We always want people. So just because we don't have any slots doesn't mean we, we don't need other community members to just show up at our meetings and, and be part of the process. So I fully recommend both these candidates and would request the board, uh, appoint them as soon as possible.
Thank you, Cory. Any questions or comments for this? If not, we can make a motion.
I'll move to appoint Marty Nee and Keith Conforti to the Cohasset 143 TV board.
Great. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right. Roll call vote.
Jack Creighton, aye.
Cory Evans, aye.
Jean Healy Dippled, aye. Diane Kennedy, aye.
Carrie Thompson, aye. Congratulations, Marty and Keith. Thanks for volunteering, if you're watching. All right. Moving on to the School Facilities Committee Schedule of Interviews update. So I know that, I think all of you got an email if you're available this Thursday to do this. Diane, I'm going to let you explain a little bit about what's happening. It's a great problem to have that we have had so many applicants for this committee. That makes me really happy. Diane?
So currently, um, for the School Facilities Committee, there's three appointments that were made by the, the school committee. This is a bylaw committee, so information about the specific charge of the committee is in the bylaws. And then the select board has three appointments and then, um, Dan Evans, the moderator, has three. So he's going to be joining us and really just for the purpose of having brief interviews with the candidates. Um, and I believe Tracy's reached out to them and, and set up times. I think it's really just a, a quick conversation with each of them and we won't deliberate that night. I, one of the, one of the challenges we have, and I think it's probably something we should talk about at a future meeting, is when there's a number of people for a limited number of, of, of appointments, that's a really good problem to have. But it's a very uncomfortable situation when people put themselves out there and then they have to listen to us in a public forum because that's the only way we can do it. Kind of debate, well, we should, what if we went with this person instead of that person? And it's really awkward. So, um, we just, we, we decided when we were coming up with the agenda to just do the interviews on one night. And then we will follow up with appointments whenever the chair and vice chair think that it makes sense. But that we wouldn't be deliberating and that Dan Evans would also have the benefit of listening to, um, you know, he'll be equally listening for people that he think would, would do well serving on that committee.
And also I think it'll help us get to know some of these people who we don't know yet to maybe figure out other fits and other committees in ways we can keep everyone who applied involved, right? So that the goal is to at least be able to figure out what other strengths people might have to be able to put them on other areas where we need help. Cory and then Jean?
Uh, yeah, uh, perfect intro, really. Thanks, Carrie. Uh, just, uh, I remember when I first joined the board, we had multiple applicants for, uh, concom. And we had one applicant that was just really, we, we had already said, hey, we're going to have a school facilities committee and we'd love to see your name on that. So I just wanted to remind Tracy, if you could go back in time and, and, and pull that residence information, just, you know, let's, let's keep that guy involved.
Yeah, Cory, Tracy has been in touch with him and he is interested in a couple other committees. So
Okay.
I think we'll see him, um, during appointments.
Thank you for that, Cory. Jean?
Um, so I did, in part because I'm new and I don't have access to it, request all the applications and I got them. And, um, some of these folks are not just interested in school facilities. They send up a variety. And, and so I think that maybe we want to consider a part of the conversation is, we know you're interested in a variety of committees. It would be really helpful, and this is why I'm asking about CPC, given the interest that we have with a new group of, you know, energized people who want to volunteer and make a change. To your point, Carrie, let's try to keep capturing the momentum and keeping them involved. And so, you know, that would be an important question to ask, I think, in terms of, you know, just to reiterate, is school facilities committee like the only thing you want to do? Or are you open to other possibilities? So that way, that might make the discussion easier. If, you know, we have, in which we do, a lot of folks who are interested in the School Facilities Committee.
Yeah, no, we don't want to lose this pool and we really want to harness the energy of this applicant pool for other things. So I, I agree with all of these things and I think we're in agreement on this. So So I, I agree with all of these things and I think we're in agreement on this. So if anyone, I don't, did we decide on a time? Was it 4:30 Thursday? So 4:30 Thursday, if any of you, any of you who are available, please come, come listen. And hopefully we'll be able to figure out who can be best for this committee and also placements for our other committees that have openings and things in the future. Okay. Last committee update I think we have is Historical Commission. I believe we have two people up for appointment Suzanne Wadsworth and Julia Gleason.
And they are, just for clarification, they are renewals. Their term ended last year in 2020. And we never made the appointments for Julia and Suzie, who both of whom have been serving the Historical Commission quite well over the last year. So this would be an appointment for the remaining, formalizing the appointment for the remaining two years of the terms that they're serving.
All right. Yeah, we dropped that ball, but hopefully we can pick it back up now.
Right, right. I found that out at the farmer's market the other day.
All right. This is, this is good. This is good. We're tying up loose ends, you know, coming out of the pandemic. All right. Any questions or issues with this or are we ready to make that motion?
So I'll move that we appoint Suzanne Wadsworth and Julia Gleason to the Cohasset Historical Commission through 2023 to your appointment.
Second.
Thank you, Jack. All right. Roll call vote.
Jack Creighton, aye.
Corey Evans, aye.
Jean Healy Dippled, aye. Diane Kennedy, aye.
Harry Thompson, aye. Thank you, Julia and Suzie for your service. All right. Next thing on the agenda is, oh, sorry, Jean.
And, and I'm sorry, before we move on from appointments and this, this actually may mesh with the next, if, if it's the website is, people are starting to ask me what is open? I'm, I'm not sure. You know, I can look at the town report and try to do like, make it like an LSAT. But in terms of figuring out what's open, is there any way we can just get a list of what the committees? Cause I hate to say, oh, go apply and then nothing is open.
Tracy can get us that list. It's something that I think we continually need to be updating and posting on our new website, which we're about to move on to that topic.
Nothing else, you know, just for right now, as you know, we want to get the word out that, hey, now is the time to begin volunteering, et cetera. I think if, and maybe this is a request to you, Chris and Tracy, to just try to, at, at least for the committees that we have, you know, a say and to, to, to just identify, here are the people, here are the terms, here are the terms that are up now. Plus any existing vacancies.
Yeah.
It would just be helpful, just so people would know.
And I think in general, it's, it's very hard and clunky to find on our current website. I believe we're in agreement about that. It's not easy for citizens to just go on and be able to see what's open. And I think we can do a way better job of highlighting and advertising that to, again, harness this enthusiasm, especially coming off this election. And so I completely agree with Eugene and it's a great transition into our next point. Diane, do you have a comment on that or do we want to?
My, my only quick comment, and we can talk about it at our next meeting, which is just that, you know, we've been using a cumbersome application form over the last number of years. And maybe we could consider just asking people to, you know, with the list that's up online, just send an email to and, and do away with that, with that, that form. I don't know that we need to take any formal action, but the, to the extent that we can make it easy for people, just tell us that you're interested. We'll bring you in, we'll have a conversation, we'll, you know, explain this, this might work for you. This might be better and, and go from there.
No, I agree. I think the form, I do like that on the form we can, people can request multiple things, but it could be great to just say, what are your talents? What do you like talking about? What do you care about in town? Here's what might be good for you. So I, I, I think we do need to talk about if we want to just eliminate that form and figure out a way to make this a little bit more streamlined and, you know, modern for year 2021. It kind of feels like the whole process is back in 1995. All right, Jack, do you have a comment on this?
I'm just trying to decide, are, have we moved on to now the?
Kind of, we kind of transitioned. Yeah.
Okay, just one, because I want to talk about.
We're in that gray area, Jack. We're in the gray area. All right. Officially transitioning, because this is a really good segue into talking about our town website redesign committee and why that matters to us and why we want to talk about it. I, I know Corey and I have talked about this a lot and I know Jean and I talked about it this weekend. So Corey, I'm going to let you have the floor for a second to just, we'll tell, just express why you think the town website needs a redesign. I mean, I have my own feelings too, but I also know you have very strong feelings about it, Corey. So do you want to say anything?
We, we don't have enough time for the amount of feelings I have towards our website. So, so you know, this is, I live e-commerce, I live web design. You know, there are very few good things I could say about, about the current setup when it comes to accessibility or mobile ability or just finding basic information. You know, and I, I don't want this to be something that we just kind of say, okay, it's taken care of. I mean, this is core to communicating with town. Now, I know websites are a little bit antiquated because everyone's on U face or whatever Bill Belichick would call it. But this is still, you know, how do I sign up for voting? How do I do this? When is, is the DPW is the, you know, what are the hours? When does senior, all this kind of stuff needs to be communicated through the website, you know, way better fashion than we're doing now. However, it's also not going to be, it's not this easy thing where we're going to make it in a blog because we have very, very technical needs. I mean, you know, there's lots of info, data, information, legal requirements. So this needs to be, you know, all hands on deck, all the brains to really find the right solution. I don't just want to farm it off to anybody and I don't want us to, to, you know, miss something. I'm really going to encourage the town and all of us. When you design a website, you have no idea how someone's going to use that website. It is impossible as a designer to understand how your users are going to use it. So we need to get everybody from town to get us information to say, hey, I use the website for this. I use the website for this. Because how we use it is going to be very different than town uses it. So I need this, I think we really need this to be an inbound process where we listen to the community, we use some of the ener, ener, the energy that's going on to hear from people about what they want to see. And that's the basis for how we go forward.
And I agree, definitely some type of survey, whether informal or formal on asking citizens, how do they currently use the website? What do they want from it? Say sidebar, I have heard that there are some new apps that towns and municipal governments are using for people. So apps that you can then put on your phones might be really popular. So just a sidebar on that. Uh, Jean, I think I saw your hand first and then Diane and Jack. You're muted, Jean.
The ironies of trying to put a plug in for technology. Yeah, no, I couldn't agree, agree with Corey more as someone who had to teach myself how to do website design recently. And it is slightly torturous for those who don't really know. It is super important though. It's the way that people are communicating these days and wanting information, not all people, but a lot of people. One thing, and I totally agree with the survey, I think that it's almost like you need to do like a needs analysis, both of the public, but also what's the information that each department has and is maintaining? And then the question about, it may come down to in part cost too. How feasible is it? Is it to, and you know, we went through this with electronic permitting. How much can really be put online? One thing we may want to consider, and this is something we may want to invite from the public too, are good examples of other town websites and municipal websites. I know, for example, the city of Boston. And we're, we're not going to have the same capacities as them, but they just went through a very substantial, you know, redesign and made it purposefully very simple and straightforward. So people could quickly, it's almost like they went towards less information than more. And so, you know, we may just want to consider some of the new approaches that are out there.
Yeah, no, if anyone, again, another homework assignment to go look at other town websites. I think ours is a great example of what not to do. So we can be proud of that. But I agree. I think that even maybe some type of, Jean, you and I can talk about maybe doing a Survey Monkey or even something to post on Facebook or to get as much responses as possible to see what the town really wants. Jack, do you have a comment on that?
The, I think, yes, we need to do it, but we need to get it done.
I agree.
I mean, we have, we're, we're well staffed. We have a whole number of professionals. We're well staffed. We have things. I mean, we don't even have our youth center. Two years after the select board said that that was a great priority. And I know some people say, oh, he keeps bringing it up. Well, I keep bringing that up because there's an example of things not getting done that are crucial. So yes, we know, we, we all know we need to do it, but we need to get it done. Thank you.
Right. Thank you. And no, I think, but we want to also get it done right and figure out how we can make it so, make it so the town loves it. And employees love it and citizens love it. So it's on the agenda because we want to get it done. But I agree with you. This, once we did make all the decisions of what we want on it, I think that it can get done pretty quickly. Diane?
So we're redesigning in my professional capacity. We're taking the lead on redesigning our website. And it is a nine month project and many tens of thousands of dollars. So, and I am a hundred percent for it. The module that we used was used by a lot of towns, but it was like 10 years ago. And we're just like layering stuff on that's not user friendly. So I'm a hundred percent behind it. But Chris, I wonder if there's a budget item now or are we really in kind of the hunting and gathering phase?
Well, the, the, the notation of the agenda is just to get a liaison or two from this board. With the staff committee that's already been formed. I mean, I met with the elder affairs folks, you know, over, during the pandemic and you know, they're, they're part of the, the website's even more, another piece. And I had trouble finding information. And, and we have, you know, these things constantly evolve. That's, you know, and, and things have evolved in the last seven years. It's time to evolve again. And so we're looking for liaisons, one or two from the board to work with the committee that exists now. Because again, this is going to be managed and worked internally. We want to make sure it works for everybody. And remember that there's lots of departments that utilize this thing. So, and it's a lot, as Corey points out, it's lots of, it's not a, we don't sell one product. We, we, we are, it really, I think in some ways it needs to be ordered. But because there's different, you know, everything's not going to reside here and it doesn't even matter, right? If you go to the library, just stay of another, you kind of work right through the library's creation. Has a separate subpiece, does different things with registrations. So I'm sorry, it's like we created, did you, were you saying something? I'm sorry.
No, I'm, I'm muted.
No, you weren't.
All right.
So, so again, all we were looking for was a couple of liaisons from the board. This is a, this is a, this has been identified internally for a while. Now that, you know, we're coming out of the pandemic, we'll be able to focus on this stuff. I know there's a lot of energy on this board and a lot of expertise somewhere.
Thank you. No, this may have been my fault. I see that we do need to appoint a liaison and I might've made this conversation a little more generalized than it needed to be on the agenda tonight. But I think it all matters to us and we all care about it. So I want the town to know that it matters to us. Corey?
Yeah, I was just going to say, Jean, thanks, or whoever brought up the, the Boston website. It's a really great example. And, you know, again, it's really easy to copy websites. If we can find the vendor that did it, it's based on, I was looking at the code. It's based on an open source package. That's fairly easy to deploy. So I would just like to throw my hat in the ring for such a liaison if the board would, would do me the honor of such a thing.
Corey is nominating himself and I respect that. Do, do we have a second?
I'll second, I'll second. Man wants to walk off the gangplank. Hallelujah.
All right.
Bruising for bruising, yeah.
Roll call vote for Corey Evans' liaison.
Jack Creighton, aye.
Corey Evans, aye.
Jean Healy Dippled, aye. Diane Kennedy, aye.
Harry Thompson, aye. Wonderful, Corey. And I actually think if anyone else wants to be a liaison too, we're allowed to have another. So you all just nominate yourself if, if you so want to. All right. Thank you, Corey. I'm excited to hear about the progress with that. All right. Moving on to our schedule of meetings. So I know on our agenda, we have our Thursday, June 10th, school facilities interviews of people. The other two might be needing to change based on what's on our agenda discussing the legal RFQ process. So if it's okay with everyone, do we maybe want to combine these two things on the agenda and talk a little bit about the legal RFQ process? Because I think that that June 17th meeting might not work based on re-editing the questions that we need to edit. So if that's okay, let's kind of combine these two because they're related. All right. Has everyone seen, I know Michelle is here to kind of give an update. Michelle, I know you sent out a draft of questions that we have to talk about because I know based on our last meeting discussing this, we really care about getting this right. So hi, Michelle, you can give us a quick update on this and then we can discuss it.
Sure. Sure. So after our last meeting, I was asked to send out a list of questions, which I did. All I did was I took all the questions that came to me. And I summarized them on a Word document. Since then, I have put together my recommendations based on all of the questions that came in. And I'm happy to share that document this evening. And what I did is I categorized it. So for all the, all of the councils that responded to the qualifications bid that we sent out, they, I have different categories for each one. So I have environmental land use and town council responding to a series of questions. And then just specific questions for town council, environmental land use. And then there's legal services questions for all areas of expertise. I would like to share that document with you because it is many of the questions that were within the document that I sent. But I also realized in the document that I sent, there were several, almost expectations that were in there that the committee set. And I did break those out into a different category. And that's something that we would negotiate into the contract. So I think we should talk about that piece as well.
Okay. Thank you, Michelle. There's a lot here. Can everyone at least see these questions now in their email to glance at? I don't know if anyone, or if everyone had a chance to read it beforehand, but this is really important. And I, Michelle, I appreciate you being able to, you know, consolidate all of this feedback from everyone. I know that in my opinion, there was a lot of repetition here and maybe a better way we can organize all these. But I know that your job was to just get everything on paper and I appreciate that. I still think we can make this draft a lot better personally, but I do want to hear what everyone thinks about it. Yeah, Chris.
I just technically, so Michelle can share her screen if it's easier to show the questions.
Happy to do that.
Go ahead, Michelle. And I also had just some thoughts too on, and this is the, the teacher in me, you know, directions for how we want these answered, right? Like I don't, I can imagine certain people maybe giving us, you know, 200 pages to read. Do we want to actually put any type of length limits on it? You know what I mean? Do we want to think about if we want to have any parameters around this, you know, assignment that we're giving to these firms? It's just one thing I wanted us to think about, but you know, I personally appreciate succinct answers a lot of times, but I also don't want to limit people either. So my thought was just, do we want to have any other parameters once we give these questions? But I do, we need to all discuss this and I want to hear all your thoughts. Corey and then Diane.
Just, so I'm clear. I mean, this is really just a combination of everything. I mean, this isn't, I mean, you know, so it's kind of hard to have initial reaction since it's so kind of everything in one basket. You know, it needs to, it needs to be kind of, I don't know, same cased and, and trimmed down. There's some duplication. You know, there's a little bit of, there's a little bit of, of time that needs to be put into this. I'm not quite sure before I can even, you know.
No, I agree.
I don't want to make a comment on something because it's, it's not done yet, you know, so it's,
I agree.
Kind of unfair to bring up criticisms or suggestions for something that's not yet done.
It's a draft, right? So the point of tonight is to edit this draft. I agree with you. It's not done. I think we all agree with that. But I think we need to figure out how to make this draft better and then also figure out a timeline for when we want this put out. Okay. Diane, I think you're heading your hand up next and then Jean.
I, I, I just wanted to say that somehow my video just completely went off and I, I'm going to try to get back on with the video. I, I am present. I am here. And I, I agree, this, this bucketing looks generally good to me right now, but I, I do think that, you know, instead of sitting here parsing words, you know, we might want to consider does delegating, you know, two people to kind of look this through and actually come up with the, you know, the protocol that we would be presenting to, to the can, to the respondents. So that's it. And I'm going to try to get back on video.
And rumor has it, we have a new lawyer on the board. So that could come in very handy.
I was heading there, yeah.
Ms. Ms. Lawyer Jean, do you have any thoughts? I'm hoping that you can be one of these people that help edit this, Jean, just because I know you're going to be better at it than any of us. Oh, you're muted.
Well, I don't want to set expectations too high, but I am happy to.
Well, I don't want to set expectations too high, but I am happy to edit this and look through it. As well as, you know, taking the comments that we're getting from the other boards as well, which I think Michelle has done a good job trying to. Harmonize and reduce duplication. But, you know, for just me personally, I would need some time to ingest this and really go through it. And on the timeline, you know, one thing that I wanted to ask was, and and I've just seen the bids that have come in. It strikes me that we don't have a lot of bids. And, you know, typically, at least from my experience, you would want a robust amount of bids, including from. As many as you can within reason, in part to make sure the government is finding the best qualified candidates. And and, you know, has a competitive cost as well. I I think that's particularly true too on the land use and environmental side. I noticed that there was a lot of attorneys who do a lot of specialist work that are have not submitted a bid. I'm not sure what the reason for that is, but I personally would like to see more of a variety of options, particularly where. A huge amount of co-hacits exposure and the money that we might be up against really is in those environmental and land use decisions. You know, ZBA Planning Board, Environment Conservation Commission, tho- those are really weighty topics that are frequently litigated. I mean, I've been sued quite a few times in my capacity as a planning board member. And so I, you know, particularly sensitive to that. And and I know frankly, when I was sued, we had a a great lawyer who I don't think is. I know she didn't submit a bid, but it it would be nice to have a variety of bids, particularly in that area, which can be quite expensive for the town if not done. You know, really well, I I personally would like some more there. I realize the deadline has closed, but I did want to put that out there.
No, I think that's a great point, Jean, and I I agree with you. The more applications we can get, the better. I feel like Michelle can address this and clarify how many applications we had and what the status is with that. Jack, I'll get to you after Michelle responds to Jean's point.
Yeah, sure. So we we did cast a wide spell. We advertised it for quite some time. It it was advertised, I believe it hit maybe March 12th, if I'm not mistaken. We did ask for the responses back the the second week in April or the first week in April. We had, we'd been talking about this in open forum for quite some time. We we did send it out to specific firms. As well as advertisers, as we should in the central register, as well as in the co-hasset Mariner. So so it was advertised. Unfortunately, this, we got back five total bids. Three were all encompassing firms that have an interest in each level of expertise we're looking for. And two chose specific categories. So we did get a total of five firms.
And did we, and I'm sorry, but did we advertise lawyers weekly?
We did not advertise it in lawyers weekly.
Okay, that's like the main periodical for lawyers where they have all the advert, the jobs advertised. So that's why I'm asking. And, you know, I appreciate that we're advertising in other places, but I don't think you're going to find a lot of firms reading the co-hasset Mariner.
I mean, we can, we can discuss putting out another bid, Jean, I think it's worth talking about. I also do worry though that it's kind of the same applicants and that it's this very small universe of firms that want to do this. I mean, obviously, it's clear that the land use especially, we really need specialization and a lot of people care about that. So I I'm torn because I feel like we want to make this happen and get it done, but I'm not sure if casting a net again would help us or not. So. I I I don't know. I I'm honestly torn about that. Jack, you had your hand up next and then Corey.
Yeah, I think the, you know, last meeting, we discussed this. We got a lot of very helpful input from the various boards and commissions. They really know what's needed. And I do think that we we should consider casting a wider net. After all, even though our existing counsel is a, is in the in the hunt. We've had the same legal counsel for a number of years. So I think that we really need to take our time. And I think we're very fortunate. I mean, I think we all know that Jean actually does this for major federal agencies. So I think having Jean's expertise and to take a look at it. And I think we ought to have an open. You know, mind on this. I know Corey from day one has been saying we need to revisit this. This is going to be very, very important and it's probably going to be a long-term relationship. There are a lot of things that we don't know yet that we don't know. And I do also know I'm a consumer of a fair amount of legal. Services. And I do know that sometimes you have to really reach out and let the word go out. That we really are open. A lot of law firms will say, oh, yeah, they advertise, but they already have their existing counsel. So we're going to do this bid and then it'll be the existing guys or girls. Or should I say gals? I don't know. But I, so I think reopening, taking a look at that and casting a wide net. And we hopefully will get a larger, better qualified overall thing to choose from. So, and we now have Jean. I mean, that's a tremendous amount of of expertise that we have and we don't have to pay for it. No, well, excuse me, $1,100 a year.
Can't hire her. She's elected now.
Well, I know. So she can't get paid.
Okay. Corey, you've had your hand up the longest now and then Diane and then Jean, if you have a follow up.
So a question and a comment, a question for Michelle. Of of those five firms, how many do we already have relationships with? Just out of curiosity.
We have relationships with all but one, I believe.
Okay, so we effectively have one new one, which, you know, makes things even a little more dire.
Yeah.
I I certainly, you know, obviously, this is, this is a very narrow area of law. We're a small town. It's not like someone's bidding on, you know. A major city here with a lot of money or a lot of billables. So I don't know what to expect. However, I I do want to reiterate that, you know, in my discussions that we've had both in, you know, in public here. As well as what I've heard from other members of boards, the urgency of this is something that came across very strong to me. There are zoning issues. There are issues in front of the planning board, right? There's a lot of places where. We've been told we need bigger guns and we need better support. And there are decisions that are being made this week, next week, this month, that are going to be made without that larger set of ammunition. Not to double up on that that analogy. But so, you know, I think we need this now. We can revisit it. I, you know, I said in the beginning that I think this is something that the select board should be doing on a regular basis, just like we do with town, the town manager. We should be looking at, you know, town council on a set schedule. And then, you know, that gives us the 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 scheduled moment where we have to reflect back and say, are we getting what we need? So I, while I do think this will be, could be a long-term relationship, I don't want to try to, you know, solve 15 years from now. I need this, I need, I think we should solve what's in front of us right now and we should plan to revisit it out of schedule.
Yeah. No, Corey, I think that's a good point because I'm a little worried that what's going to happen is we're going to cast another net and then we'll still have the same applicants. I mean, I I wish we could get more, but you're right. We're a specialized, small little town. I I don't know how many more we can get. I would love to get more, but I'm not sure. And I think, you know, Jack brought up, brought up this point earlier. I think one of our hardest jobs this next year is going to be balancing the urgency of things like this, like our website. Like the community center with also making sure we get these things done right. You know what I mean? And I think figuring out the timing on that is tricky. So I I really do understand the points everyone's bringing up. I'm I'm not entirely sure. I I'm a little bit torn on it personally. Diane.
So, you know, what I, what I was going to recommend is because there is, especially with the land use and permitting boards, there is a real urgency to to make sure that we. At least have conversations with potential attorneys for, to find the best in class. And just knowing that there is a very small universe of municipal law firms that that are billing at, you know, $230 an hour. And I think that's a, that's one reason why a lot of firms, you know, go on the opposite side of the table and represent clients that are, you know, represent. Landowners and residents that are going before the board. So I would recommend two things. I would, I would love to have maybe Jean and Carrie as chair to, you know, sit down and. Refine this protocol so that we can set up, start setting up interviews and go through this process. If we go through the process and we feel like we're not getting the answers or the comfort level with the professionals that have, you know, have responded to this RFP and have waited for three months. Then we can discuss at that point restarting it. But I think to do so now or to, we can't, we would have to open the whole bidding process all over again and kind of start from scratch. So I recommend we do that and and try to keep this at least going to get this investigation phase. Because the reality is, even if we were to reopen the bidding process. All of these firms would likely be part of it. So why don't we at least have the conversations with them and see where we're at and and and, you know, get. You know, ensure that we're giving our permitting boards the help that they desire. So.
All right. I appreciate that feedback. Jean and then Jack.
Yeah. So Diane, you raise a good point. And just as a procedural matter, can we, for example, begin the interviews with the existing bidders? And I don't know if this is possible from a procurement standpoint, but I'm just going to put it out there. While having the bid open for additional firms that may want to come in, or is that not?
I can't, no.
Okay.
Yeah, no, that's a good question.
Okay.
So I, Michelle.
It's actually a great question. But the the reason that they won't allow that is because it takes the fair and equitable out of the entire process. Because someone's starting the process when someone, before someone else has a chance to respond. So it just takes that equitable piece out of the bidding process. So it's either you interview everyone now and then you decide at the end of interviews, you know, you're happy with a few of the candidates. And then you go back out to bid for additional candidates or you choose. Someone from this pool. So you do options, you just can't do it at the same time.
Yeah, no, my biggest worry at this point is wasting time to only get the same bidders back. And then we just have wasted time on it. So that that's my biggest concern. Jack?
Well, my suggestion would be that we have you and Jean, two weeks, take a look at this. I'll be quite honest, and I know a lot of the attorneys who have put bids in, and I like some of them a lot. I don't think we have a very good group to choose from. I just, I'm very disappointed. I may be wrong, but I would defer to, you know, Carrie's chair. And Jean is clearly tremendous amount of expertise and at least two weeks and see, see where we are. Because I just don't like the pool.
So do we maybe want?
And some of them I like personally.
Yeah, no, I I appreciate that, Jack. So maybe we, Jean and I can spend the next two weeks before our meeting on the 22nd, diving into these questions and looking at it. And Jean, I'll be your assistant on this because this is clearly more your pay grade than than mine. So I I would be happy to do that with you and we can maybe come back on the 22nd and make a final decision. Does that sound doable? Okay. So I don't think we need any motion on that, but obviously the June 17th and June 22nd scheduled dates are not relevant anymore. So you all just got a couple dates free for the summer. All right. Let's revisit this issue on the 22nd. I know a lot of people are watching right now who really care about this. We care about this as well. We're trying to get the best people in place for the town. We're trying to get the best options for the town. Let's see where we are in a couple of weeks. Okay, moving on to the town manager update.
Hey, thank you, Carrie.
We're only 10 minutes behind schedule. We're doing pretty good.
Absolutely.
Great job.
So a couple of, a couple of quick updates. First, AAA bond rating was reaffirmed by Standard and Poor's last week. The rating review cited, among other things, strong management adherence to fiscal policies, strong budgetary practices and the clown's work, town's work. Residency and cybersecurity in my rating. So I thank all the financial team for all the hard work and this board and the advisory committee and others. Who've laid the foundation and kept the town focused on strong fiscal policies and practices. So thank you. The proposed dates for July, I just want to, so normally, I would normally be circulating right about now a calendar for the entire next fiscal year. And I will be doing that shortly. So I'm going to ask you to hold the 13th, 20th and 27th of August on your calendars. As well as the 10th of August, that kind of mirrors the dates we did last year. Tentatively, depending on how this would work, the 20th would be the FY22 goals session for the board. Same kind of format as last year, except everyone will be in person without having to be under three.
We get to eat without masks on this time.
Get to eat without masks on. It'll be very exciting. So and we'll be circulating, you know, options for food. We usually try a local restaurant and then bring food in. So and the, and I'm recommending, depending on how things schedule out, that maybe the board takes a couple of weeks off the end of August. Let everyone take vacation and then we'll hit the ground running again in September. So so there'll be meetings again on the 22nd. Again, and then on the 13th, 20th and 27th, the 6th is the day after the 4th of July weekend and the 5th is the celebrated holiday for the public sector. So that's going to be a very hard week, I think. So everyone gets a little break. I think Carrie has a good idea. The quick updates on on town speed limits. So we're going to be presenting on the 22nd. A proposed map showing the alternative areas of the 25 areas that might be recommended to be a little bit higher. And also, if some of the proposals for additional signage, I know this, we quoted out, police and DBW have quoted out a couple of these little radar signs. That are going to be proposed to you folks if you want to put them at the entrances to the village to remind people to slow down. We have them in a couple of the places in town and they, they can be effective. A lot of other committees have popped them up too in in high-risk areas. And also we're processing the new speed limit with the state. That's another process that has to go through with this. So the state tomorrow transportation has to get an official word from us that the speed limits are changing as part of the process. So it's happening. And just quickly, I know that everyone is probably the hottest topic in town today is the bear. So I just got an update from from Chief Quigley. There is a bear, there's a black bear. He was in situ at for a few days. He wandered through Don Street this morning. The last he was seen is on the spur trails. So we would ask everyone to be careful. That said, the state wildlife folks said, please just leave the bear alone unless he starts going into people's garbage or their bird feeders. He will mostly, or she will most likely stay away from folks. So and it's being monitored. So the bear is moving through Wampatuck Park at the moment. I would expect would probably go back west because there's just not a lot of, lot going on here. So I think it's the first time we've seen a bear co-hasset in modern times. So Bill did say, our social media front, 27,000 people interacted with the Facebook post today about the bear. So it it got a lot of Facebook attention. So the bear, which was named Boo Boo by people in situ, apparently, is out there. So again, please be safe. The black bears tend to avoid people. That said, stay away. You know, it's still a bear and it's big. So please be careful if you're walking your dogs or if you're riding or hiking, particularly at times in the morning and evening when the bear is moving and active. So just be careful. So that's the update for tonight.
All right. Thanks for that bear update. All right, moving on to select board comments. And we can talk about this at goals meeting, our goals meeting, but we can maybe switch up the order different times if all of you want. It doesn't always have to be alphabetical, but we can do it alphabetically tonight, but we can switch it up just to spice things up in the future. Jack?
Actually, I was just going to bring that up because having been first and last, it changes the dynamic. So that's a very, very good idea. I I guess, you know, what everybody in town is talking about is congratulations, Jean. She, you worked very, very hard. And I think we should be aware of that. And and as a board, we should take a look at the the election. And I think for all of us who've been in leadership for a while. There's a very, very strong message. A lot more people came out who have not not voted in a long time and had a very strong message. And I think those of us who've been in leadership for a while should welcome all the new voters and say, thank you for participating in the process. And that we, as your elected leaders, will respect and and follow your guidance. They run the town. And that's not to diminish how, what a great campaign Jean ran and the number of years that Paul Schubert has served this town. But we we saw a watershed and so welcome, refreshing growth and change for co-hasset. And it just restores my my faith in democracy.
Thank you. And Jack, I'll let you go last at at our next meeting for select board comments.
Well, some people say I should go last and then shut it off before I speak, but that's a, that's a comment for another day.
Let you adjourn, okay? All right, Corey.
Yeah, welcome, Jean, to the board. Fun part's over.
Oh, that was fun.
That's actually the worst part, honestly.
So I just want to share, you know, this week, 143 TV, we're trying to reboot a show that was started a couple of years ago. By resident who called Food 143. And we're going to be highlighting, trying to do local. By resident who, uh, called Food 143. And we're going to be highlighting, trying to do local, um, your chefs or restaurants or just home cooks and really kind of, you know, connect maybe with the Cohasset, the, the cookbook that's going on and really kind of have something that's really engaging and really nice. I bring this up because the first subject that we're, the first episode, we're going to, you know, pilot this, uh, is going to be with the launch program. And the launch program is run out of the senior center, Walker Commons. And it's a, it's a, one of many phenomenal, phenomenal programs that our community has. Um, when it comes to whether it's people with disabilities or seniors or, you know, youth. Now that we can get out again, think, I challenge everybody, look for something to volunteer for. Um, we have so many great community-based, uh, organizations here that have been hurting the last year because everyone went poof. Um, so now that you're getting back out, a great way to, you know, bring people together, make bridges is to go to volunteer. Um, if you're looking for volunteer opportunities, there's a million of them. The senior center is one of them that could always use an extra hand. You know, there's, uh, events at Safe Harbor. There's opportunities all over the place for you to connect with your neighbors. So I encourage everybody to take this beautiful summer, uh, to go volunteer for stuff. Thank you.
Thank you, Cory. Jean?
So I'm really excited to join the board and, um, I'm looking forward to working with all of you. I think that there are a lot of exciting things on the horizon. And I know that, um, you know, there was a lot of movement, for example, at town meeting, some of which was, um, you know, pretty epic and some of which was seemingly small, but pretty important to people like those tennis courts and fields. And so I think that, um, you know, as we move throughout the summer, and I know the summer is a great time to vacation and relax. At the same time, I think it's a great opportunity to try to knock off some of these things that people that, that are really important, um, in people's lives. And I'm really also looking forward to trying to figure out, and I love the discussion about the town website. I think that's just the beginning of, you know, trying to figure out better ways to include people in the government process, whether it's people who are routinely in the government process, but just wanted to be better or people that are trying to figure out like how to vote. So I'm really excited by all of that and excited to join you all.
Thank you, Jean. We're excited to have you. And hopefully we'll be in person next time. It's so weird that you have to start on Zoom. Cory had to start on Zoom too.
Yeah. And I just want to say, I've spent a lot of time with Dr. Schubert and, um, you know, I really do appreciate his service to the town. He ran a great, clean campaign. I tried to do the same. And I think notwithstanding all the talk about civility, you know, I hope that we tried to set the tone through our campaigning and interactions with each other.
Yes, you both did a great job at that. Diane?
Thank you. And I apologize. The only way to get my video back was to reboot my computer. So I, I am here and I apologize. Yes, that's true, Cory. That's what it's, the message said. Again, congratulations, Jean, welcome aboard. And it was, it was a very well-done campaign by, by, um, certainly you and, and Paul as well. So welcome aboard. A couple of things, um, one is that, um, uh, Chris, a question for you is Black Rock Beach and parking. That's been an issue that we've been talking about for a number of years. And over the past couple of weekends, when there's been nice weather, it is, it's just disaster. People are parking the wrong direction. People are parking without, and I know we raised the fines, but I don't know if there's any movement. It's probably too late for the summer, but to, to expand or, or, or do something better with the parking situation there.
I think we could talk about this more, um, at, at a future meeting. That said, I will say that the Public Works is working with the property owners that have easement issues. There's people who have encroached on public land. They've been notified of that by council. And, uh, we're in the process of working with them to try to find a way for them to get off the public land that would allow for some work to be up there, uh, for parking and a pathway to parking. So, um, that's a, you know, that's a, a long and, uh, you know, I think at this point, so we're trying to be polite.
Right.
So I, I will try to get an update to all of you, uh, with Public Works, uh, later in the, in the season.
And, um, just to continue Jean's comment about, um, field and, and, um, field use and sports and all the recreational facilities around town. I do know that the, um, rec commission, because it's in their purview to kind of oversee the fields that aren't overseen by the schools and to do facility planning in terms of recreational space. I know that they were taking it up at, at a recent meeting. So I think it might be great to consider doing a joint meeting with rec in the select board because it is town land and people are coming to us. But ultimately it's probably going to be a partnership with, you know, rec, select board and some of the, um, the booster groups in town in particular to figure out what makes sense going forward in, in terms of overall field and, uh, recreational space, uh, planning. And that's it.
Those are great points, Diane. I think we need to have Black Rock and joint meeting with rec on a very soon agenda. I think they're both really good ideas. I have on that Black Rock issue. I know some citizens have said, maybe we need to think about doing a different type of lining for spaces. Maybe relining, maybe allowing some parking on the, the grassy side. I don't know. But I definitely think that as it gets to be more beach days, that's going to be an issue. Also, another fun thing, this Saturday, if you don't have plans, the diversity committee is hosting the Loving movie at seven 30 at Alumni Field. There will be food trucks. There will be ice cream, some cornhole games. It'll be really fun to just not have restrictions on how many people can attend. And if anyone wants to come watch a movie under the stars at seven 30 and it's a really good movie. And it's, you know, I think we're going to have very good turnout. So also thank you to Safe Harbor for co-sponsoring that. So seven 30 on Saturday, I hope to see a lot of you at Alumni Field. And then kind of heading into topics not reasonably anticipated, I'm really honored to be elected chair, but I also know that we're a little bit in limbo with whether our future meetings are going to be in person or on Zoom. For those watching, our legislature and governor are currently trying to work through some things after the state of emergency is lifted en masse, based on whether municipal meetings will be required to go back in person or not. From what I can tell in talking to members of the legislature, it seems like they're trying to find some type of hybrid option that is allowable. But I did just want to kind of gauge the board's opinion on this. I, I know that there are a lot of advantages to being in person and there are a lot of advantages to being virtual as well. So does the board have any strong feelings either way on this? We might not have a choice. It depends on what happens in the next couple of weeks. But I mean, there's a chance that we might be in person at our next meeting. So I wanted to bring this issue up and just see if anyone had any thoughts on that. Cory?
I mean, I, I think, I believe an in-person meeting is more productive. However, I, I am worried about us going backwards when it comes to accessibility. I think these meetings being on Facebook, especially, even though Facebook has its own issues. So I'm a little bit hesitant to say, let's go back in person before, before we figure out the technical side of actually getting these meetings up and, and accessible to people that can't attend them. I don't want to go backwards.
I don't ever want to get off Facebook too. I agree. I think even whether we're in person or not, us, I think we always need to have the Facebook live streaming. So I agree with you. Jean and then Jack? And then Diane?
Yeah, I, I would agree with Cory. That was my exact point and your point too. So I'm just.
Again, stay tuned on this. I just, I think we're all, Jack, what do you think?
Well, there are some, I, I, I think a hybrid. One of the advantages of Zoom is they can actually see us and hear us clearly. So you can't kind of sit there up on the, you know, at, where you can, they can't be seen or heard. It also the ability to put those documents up, um, on a screen is, is huge for us when we're deliberating. When they have this, it up on the screen, uh, in the, uh, meeting, the town hall meeting room, we can't see it. Nobody can see it. Nobody knows what we're talking about. I do think that we should have that sense of being in the same room. But I think and Cory would probably, um, be able to weigh in on this. It is not problematic at all to have our same laptops in front of us. You know, while we're up on the, uh, the bench up, up front. And that way we're here, we're talking to each other. We can see the faces. The people at home could see the, the faces. And they can hear us clearly what we're saying. So I would be very much in favor of that. And it's also drives attendance. When people can at home, sit there and dial in, they find out what's going on. They don't have to come down to town hall, that, you know, which in the summertime, it's hot. In the wintertime, it's cold. It's crowded. You're always, you can't really hear. This way we get a broad portion of the town can easily see us. We can talk to everybody. It, it's a win-win. And that's what I think a hybrid could do. So I think we ought to push strongly for a hybrid.
And I do think that's what the legislature is trying to get for us, but it seems like there's a lot of popularity for a hybrid option. Diane?
I was at a, a select board meeting, Mass Select Board Association meeting today and this very topic was brought up. And I think the general consensus was that hybrid is ideal. But with some of the challenges, and there's going to be a workshop later this summer about this statewide. Some of the challenges are, you know, really being able to deliver a hybrid meeting, uh, of, of, of quality in terms of staffing and expense and et cetera. And people are outfitting their select board rooms with cameras so that they can, you know, really project out because people are used to, to watching these meetings and, and it has really, um, improved participation. So stay tuned on that. And just on that, Tracy, I wonder if you could make sure that the MMA has all of our CohassetMA.org addresses because I, I don't know that I get a lot from the MMA, um, other than for the committees that I'm involved with. So, um, but they have really great programs and it's, it's a great way to network and, and learn more about what's going on, particularly in this hybrid thing. So anyway.
Yeah, we obviously need to up our technological and sound audio game for doing hybrid. I, I agree. But we're figuring this out as we go, but I think we can definitely make it a lot better in the room. Jean?
Yeah, I wonder if part of this dovetails with the discussion about the town website.
Yeah, it does. I think technology in general, and when we all talk about our goals and July, I think that this is absolutely going to be a goal. But in the short term, I think we need to figure out how to keep these meetings as accessible as possible for everyone while also being able to meet in person occasionally. Cause I think it does really change the dynamic too. So stay tuned. I, I don't know what our June 22nd meeting is going to be yet, but stay tuned. All right. Are there any other topics anyone wants to bring up? Jack, is that a?
No, Kara, you, you know, I'm getting that lean and hungry.
I, I know. It's almost your moment. Jack, it's almost your moment. We're getting there.
I'm ready, you know?
The anticipation, I can feel it. Okay. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second and great job, Carrie.
Thank you. All right. Roll call vote, starting with.
Raven's eye.
Jean Haley Dipple, die.
Diane Kennedy, I.
Harry Thompson, I. Thank you, everyone.
Good night, everybody.
Congratulations, Jean.